All right. Hope everyone's had the opportunity to look over the minutes from our last meeting. If y'all have any corrections or anything, if not, I entertain a motion.
Motion approving that?
Second.
All in favor? Five of us. All right. And new citizens comments? Alrighty. Mr. Moore.
All right, thank you. So we're gonna start taking a look at general fund through the end of January. So through the end of January, our revenues exceeded our expenditures by one million five hundred ninety-six thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars. This is, we're now starting to settle in with what we've seen this point, this point in the year compared to prior years. So I really like where we're standing from an overall perspective. Revenues for the most part has settled in to where we expect them to be, where we want them to be. Maybe slightly ahead. One of the, one of the primary reasons being that updated state aid to classrooms collection that we got, we got in January. That was our first collection that we received with our updated enrollment numbers. I mentioned to you the, the big increase we saw from that enrollment numbers this annualized. But just from a month-to-month perspective, we, we increased, that collection increased by a little more than a hundred thousand dollars from December to January. So part of that catching up there. And then also on the property tax collection side. Several times that our, our millage valuation based on the assessment reports indicates some strong collections coming forward. And we're seeing that now that the bulk of those property taxes are, are coming in. And I'll touch on a little bit more on, on the value of the mill. But it is still higher than that thirty-three thousand dollars that we budgeted with last year. So I want to show you exactly where we are on the property tax side. So this first chart here shows us what we have recorded through the month of January. That we've received in the month of January. We see just under five point eight million dollars in property tax collections. Whereas at this point last year, we were just at five point one million dollars. So a good bit ahead. But with some of the, some of the collections that the county taking a little bit longer to trickle in and make it to our books. What you'll see in February, part of this is what was collected through the county by, through January thirty-first. And you can see we're starting to level out a whole lot closer now that we're getting closer to the property tax collections being finalized. So about two hundred thousand dollars, a little more than two hundred thousand dollars ahead of last year's collections through January thirty-one at the county level. We recorded that collection in February because that's when the funds were received here in the district. But you can see that, that second line there, I know it's a little small, that current line, that's, that's your real property. For the most part, we did exceed our budget there. And there'll be a little bit more money come in on that specific line item. But feel good about that budget, hitting that budget already since the bulk of that money comes in in these two months. So from a property tax standpoint, feel pretty good there. And on the expenditure side, really not, not a lot of new information there. It's pretty much what we've seen all year long, spending as expected. And with the exception of those, those two key items that with the food service franchise, that money not, not being used last year because of the guidance we received. And then basically that, that freed up budget being spent this year. And that, and then also purchasing the instructional software at school level in the general fund with, with the absence of other funds. But just kind of reiterate where we're seeing it kind of settling in. With the exception of FY twenty-twenty-one, we had some major time differences back here. But for the most part, settling in anywhere from that one point six, one point seven mark here in January is where we want to be and where we've been. So I feel good about where we sit in general fund during January. Any questions? General fund related? All right. To sales tax collection, a little smaller, getting smaller there as more collections come in. But in January, we received allocation of two hundred ninety-nine thousand five hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. The second largest collection we've received since we got the sales tax. So it continues to do well. As a reminder, that should, that should reflect the November spending here in the county. And if history is any indication, next month could potentially be above three hundred thousand dollars just based on what we've seen in January and February collections. February is typically the strongest one reflecting that December spending. But we'll, we'll see how that comes in and we'll of course keep you updated on that. You can see here, I know it gets smaller here too. Our, our collection percentage as a district did, did receive a little bit of a bump going from eight point one nine percent up to eight point five five percent. And that's reflective of, of our district's average daily membership in proportion to the countywide ADM. And so we received a little bit of a bump there, but that did help us out from that perspective. So and of course of that, two hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars, fifty-nine of it going directly towards property tax relief. And then another two thirty-nine, two forty is uh being available for capital use. And just kind of for a point of reference, kind of illustrate where, how far these collections have come. So far, seven months into this fiscal year, sales tax collections have already exceeded what we collected entire year of seventeen eighteen. So we had not one point eight six that year and we're only at one point nine with five months ago. So tells you a lot about just what the cost of everything is since this is, seems to be proportionate to that as well. So, so it looks a whole lot different than what, what it was predicted to be when it first started. Any sales tax related questions?
Matthew, you might just want to speak to the fact that all five districts' sales tax are being audited? And so just to share that information?
So these, these funds, of course, need distributed from the department revenue. And they, they reached out to us in the past month or so about a countywide audit for expenditures from July one twenty nineteen to June thirty twenty twenty-four. Just from a compliance standpoint, making sure that the funds are being spent on allowable categories that are set out in the referendum. So, so all five districts are, are hard at work gathering lots and lots of information for the department revenue. They anticipated the audit taking approximately three months or maybe several months before the whole thing gets wrapped up. But had that meeting last week and we're, we're all gathering lots of data in that right now.
So do you, you gather the data and you send it to them and they, they do what they do and then they come and meet with us? Or are you, or how's that work?
Not, not really sure the ins and outs of the entire process, but we're gonna give them a lot of information when we run in. They're gonna pick out certain things to sample out and based on what we, what we give them. I guess we'll give them a little more detailed documentation of what we give them. From the county level, they get the bank statements where the money comes in and we have sent information where we received the money and how we claimed the money from the county. And how we recorded this money in our, in our software as it comes in, just, just things of that nature, making sure it's aligned with the referendum.
I'm sure it'd be all right.
And we had an audit on this before?
Out on the sales taxes, first one. I, I've kind of got, got the sense that they're somewhat new to this department of revenue and they just started doing these audits. I think they've done a couple of the counties who have, have a sales tax that they're working on as well. So I think it's somewhat new, so that we all, all did it all at once, sharing, sharing joy of this audit.
What year did you start, what year did you start dealing with the sales tax? When did you come?
I started January twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen. So you hadn't been here the whole time?
Not, not the whole time of, of the lot.
I couldn't remember exactly when you came.
Did you say three months before it's gonna take the process?
She anticipated the, the entire audit taking three months. It was just an estimate that, that the department revenue.
Thank you.
Any sales tax related questions? All right. So again, as I mentioned last month, this will be early in the budget process. But I did want to give you what I could give you with what we know at this time. So wanted to just kind of take a minute and give you somewhat of a budget preview. As I call it, kind of go over some of the factors that, that will likely be used to shape our budget and, and things that we know at this point that will affect our budget. Try to turn those, turn these factors into dollars for you as we, as we begin this process. So on the revenue side, starting there, I know we talked a lot about our enrollment increase and how that affects us. So weighted pupil units is, is, is how the state aid to classrooms calculation is generated. That's one of the many factors in this, this big convoluted calculation. So the current year's budget was shaped around a weighted pupil unit of four thousand three hundred and eighty. And just for a point of reference, I know we talked about ADM and then weighted pupil units. So weighted pupil units is, is that number, accumulative number, once these factors get, get converted from the ADM to weighted pupil unit. So as a point of reference, of course, a base weighted student is one ADM, one weighted pupil unit. A student with a primary code of disability is one ADM, it's a two point six weighted pupil units. And if vocational or CTE is one point two. And then on top of those primary weightings, there are add-on weightings of zero point one five for high achieving or academic assistance. And then point two oh for limited English proficiency and then point five oh for pupils in poverty. So all of that gets added together and culminates into a weighted pupil unit. So, so our ADM increased eighty-five, eighty-six from the actual forty, a hundred thirty-fifth day last year to forty-fifth day this year. So a hundred weighted pupil units is in my mind a, a good conservative estimate to start with. So once you take all the factors into consideration. So taking that additional a hundred weighted pupil units, again, in a vacuum, not any other factors changing, is an estimated half a million dollars additional revenue to plan with. And then index of tax paying ability is another big factor that goes into the state aid to classrooms formula. Index of tax paying ability is, is a measure of our district's property evaluation in proportion to the entire states. So our, our index of tax paying ability, it actually went down, but that doesn't necessarily, our property value went down, it's just proportioned to everyone else in the state. So there could be reassessments in other counties and things like that to drive other ones way up. Where ours may not, may just have a small increase, but proportionally we're, we're decreasing there. So it's decreasing point oh oh two four eight to point oh oh two zero nine. And this is a preliminary number, we still have not received the, the final number from department revenue. But rarely does it change, at least change significantly. So we feel pretty good about where that's looking like it's gonna be. With that factor being plugged into the formula, again, in a vacuum, it is an additional four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So two, two factors in a big, big allocation that we received were in our favor at Star. So, so that, that's some good news as we kind of kick off the budget season. And then the only other revenue lineup that we feel good about, at least estimating at this point, is, is that value of a mill. You mentioned earlier, we, we budgeted at thirty-three thousand. Looking at the assessment reports, thirty-five thousand dollars is a good conservative estimate to start with. So taking that additional two thousand dollars and increase the value of mill times our hundred ninety point four five. Mill, mills that we have operationally should yield about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars on the revenue side of that. So, so those are some factors I know we talked about, but that's one, just kind of put that into dollars and cents for it as we start moving towards, towards deeper parts of the budget. Now on the expenditure side of things, a lot of talk at the state level. If all signs are pointing to a three thousand dollar increase for, for teachers on the state minimum teacher salary schedule. Right now, the state minimum's at forty-seven thousand and they're proposing to get it to fifty this year. Again, that's not where we are, that's just the state minimum. But suppose that we, we tried to mirror what the state's doing with three thousand dollars, it'd be an estimated seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And that's used, using roughly a hundred and eighty teachers in, in the general fund. So again, a very round number, not exact, but that, that's just kind of to, to kind of give you a frame of reference of how, what the state's doing would impact us if we mirrored that exactly. And then of course, every year in the budget is required to teach your staff increase, funding that just based on historical numbers. About a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to expect as, as a total cost there, salary and benefits included. And then the health insurance increase that took effect this month, this past month, January, during the budget process, we budgeted seven months of that since it took effect mid-year. And then add, add an extra month to give you a buffer for open enrollment changes and things like that. So just annualizing that, essentially budgeting those other five months would be an additional a hundred thousand dollars to kind of expect, to look out for. That we'll need to make sure we have those costs budgeted for as well. So, so those are some payroll things related to the budget we can somewhat estimate at this point. And then kind of in, in connection to that, just, just looking at the AIT budget, that's a budget that's eighty-five percent payroll cost, much like ours. So if, if these things come to fruition with teacher raises and health insurance costs, and that's not even taken into consideration what may come of the twenty-twenty-six health insurance increase. And we've seen big increases the past few years. So, so if those folks with that much payroll costs tied up in their budget, very, very likely that there could be a budget increase there considering how much payroll costs is tied up in that. Don't, don't know to what extent, but just want to kind of keep that on your radar given some of these other, these other points there. Another thing is that, that we haven't visited much in the past five years thankfully, is the SRO contract. And we've increased that one time in the past five years. That's something that the town has, has already reached out to us to start conversations about, about, about taking a look at possibly increasing that. And just wanted to put that on your radar. Don't, again, don't know what number they would look to ask, but that's something that we're well aware of, could be coming down the road. So just want to kind of get out in front of that and make you aware that that's something that we're looking at this going forward.
When you're talking about that?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I think when we, when we began with IBA, they had some grant dollars, right?
Yes.
Are those exhausted?
Those, those, those grant dollars have been used, been used. So essentially we're.
But we're still, we're still utilizing that then, okay?
We're essentially budgeted for, for officers who are funded. And then just to kind of note down there, it, it don't really have anything to quantify for you, but something that we just kind of historically seen is the, the growth in our special education population. Needing some support there. We've pretty much extended all of our grant funds between IDEA and Medicaid dollars that can be used on special education. So additional special education support would need to come from the general fund. What that looks like exactly, I don't know. I anticipate some sort of mix of staffing and services. But to kind of put, put a frame of reference or around some, I guess, some data points to support that additional five hundred thousand dollars that we're roughly looking at for the additional weighted pupil units. About forty percent of that is from those special education student weightings. So, so roughly two hundred thousand dollars of that possible five hundred thousand dollars is coming from those students. So, so just kind of a, a data point to support that, that we got a growing population that requires some support there. So that's something that we're, we're gonna take a close look, like, look at and probably bring to the budget process. And then just a last note down there, and as you know, we're, we're very heavily dependent on state funding. So we pay close attention to the state budget calendar as things rolls out. So next week should start carrying stuff in the house and the way that means budget talks next week with their budget going to the full house. That second week in March and then Senate get, get done in April. Conference committee scheduled in May, but as we've seen in the past few years, it very rarely wrapped up prior to May. So that's the schedule, just want to put that in front of you on radar and hopes that's when information will start rolling out to you as we move throughout the budget season. Any questions, comments?
All that just going on nationally, I guess, with the federal dollars and, and education component? I mean, is any of that? Are you hearing anything that's, that's may affect us?
I have not heard anything as of yet that's made it down the line. I know whenever the, the temporary freeze got put in place, the, the state department was pretty quick to let us know that that does not affect K-12 education funding. They did not mention, I think it was some of the programs at the federal level that was more major. But I have not heard anything that was.
I wish the social media people would say that. Cause everybody's hounding it me like we going broke or something, I don't know.
All right.
Appreciate that.
I think we'll pass this, the baton to Ms. Hatcher and Ms. Davis. Try to miss them. There you go. Ashley, would you like the? Yeah, that's the clicker.
All right. Thank you for having us here tonight. Errol and I are excited to go over the report card from last year. And while I was not, last year was not there as principal, was heavily involved as our letters initiative. So I was able to see a lot of great things that took place at Star. And so just really continuing to build on those great things this year and highlight some of those successes that we've had. And then also look at areas that we want to continue to grow in. Okay, so I'll start with our mission statement. So our mission is leading the way to a brighter future. The vision of Star Elementary is for all students to be engaged in rigorous learning experiences that build on students' talents.
Challenge their skills and understanding and develop their ability to reason, problem solve, collaborate and communicate in preparation for college and career success. And that is something that we do not take lightly at Star. We know that the importance of getting our learners ready for middle school and high school and beyond. And so research shows how important it is for students to be reading on grade level by fourth grade. And so a lot of what we shared today, there has been a lot of hard work and preparation that goes into the planning process to make sure that our students are, are ready for that next step. So a spotlight and a shout out for not only our teacher of the year, Ms. Ivester, but she is also represents district teacher of the year. She's our reading coach at Star Elementary. She does a phenomenal job supporting our teachers and our staff and our students and families. And so we cannot be more excited to have her with us. She just, she does a great job looking over the data. She does a lot of our crafts and she does a lot of our student grouping and works with our teachers and just is that supportive piece that teachers need. Um, also work staff of the year, Ms. Chrissy Baldwin. And so when I'm introducing her to new people in the front office, she is one of the two that I said, that I tell people, she helps keep me in line. She just does a great job of, really she's that first face that you see in the building. And so she has a smile on her face. She also takes her job very seriously. So I have a lot of trust in her as far as when people are coming in our building, that they are, that it's safe for them to be there. And if she has any questions, she will be the first one to call for me and make sure that the right actions are, are taken and the right steps are in place. And so again, just a friendly face at Star Elementary and we are so, we're so happy to have her a part of our, our staff. So this year, a lot to celebrate at Star Elementary from last school year. Fifty-second out of six hundred and thirty-eight schools, that is the highest state ranking so, so far. And so we've looked at and look at it just a little bit, how far over the past several years, we have really made a lot of gains in that area. And that comes with a lot of planning and preparation over time. And so when we were looking at this and talking about this, when you get to this, this place, you really have to narrow your focus. And so stepping into this role, I knew there are a lot of great things happening at Star Elementary. You don't want to go in and change everything, but then you also want to look at what are the areas that we could improve upon and make even better. And so I'll talk about that in just a moment. Did you want to highlight our third grade ELA and math scores from SC Ready? Those students in both areas, our students scored over eighty percent for meets and exceeds, I mean, needs and exceeds. And so that is just, that is such a great representation of all the hard work that not only took place in third grade, but from K-four all the way to that, that time. And so again, just a full team effort and you'll see it in just a moment when we talk about some of the things that we have in place at Star. So here's our historical school rankings. You can see from two thousand sixteen, where we start, we were a hundred and thirty-ninth place and now in fifty-second place. So again, when you see that amount of growth and we really try to look at, okay, where do we go from here? And how can we continue to improve and get in that top fifty? Because that's where we want to be, we want to continue to see that growth. So we'll look at, these are some of our school strengths. I know that's a lot of information, but these are some things that I definitely want to highlight and we'll talk more about. So I'm not gonna read over this to you, but one of the first things is tighter time. And we're gonna, that is one of the areas that I really want to highlight, a block of time that we have created for all of our students. And I'll talk more about that in just a moment. We are currently doing the one book, one school. And so our students and our families are just having a great time reading that with their family for enjoyment. And so we've had a lot of great feedback. Ms. Ivisher did a wonderful job kicking that off for our students and getting them excited about reading. And so we've had several students, including my own son, who my youngest is not one that's gonna walk around with a book in his hand on his own. And so this is the first time that he has been excited about reading without any push or encouragement from mom. And so he reads that book each night and talks about it. And that just really shows like how important those things are that we're doing with our schools. And so that's something we're excited about at Star. We have our star course. We did change a little bit about what that looked like in the past, that was an after-school program. So now that it's something that is offered throughout the day for students that are interested. And so I'll talk about where we put those clubs throughout the day so that it is, all of our students have the opportunity to participate in, in those clubs. So Ms. Vickery has done a phenomenal job with that. They had their Christmas, their Christmas presentation. We had, had our Grinch Day and the students just did a wonderful job. So we have about sixty students in that, in that club, third through fifth grade. We have our mentor buddies and our guest readers. So that is where we have community members, parents, retired teachers. It could be Dr. Nixon, Ms. Gray, I know you have a student as well. They come in throughout the week and they eat lunch with the student. Some of our high school students come in at recess and they mentor students. And that has just been, I think this is year two of that mentor buddy system and we continue to see it grow. I think last year we had thirty-five and this year we're serving over seventy students. And so those students, they really look forward to that time with their mentor. And it's just a great motivation and incentive for those students to, to be their very best. We have family nights, which is something we've really focused on this year is creating opportunities for our students, our parents and our families to feel welcomed in our building. And hopefully take away whether it's something for academics, social emotional support, whatever the need may be. But we really work hard to tailor those events so that we get the most participation possible. Our Good News Club is still going from the Star Baptist Association and they do a great job with that. We have our Beta Club. This is our second year of that and we, we inducted forty-five new members this year. Again, that's Ms. Ivisher that leads that and she does a great job with it. This past weekend, our Beta Club served at one of the Joy Comes events. And it was a dance for community members, but we had a lot of adults with special needs at that event. And our students, I was a part of that, just being able to see them serve and to help others, it was just, it was a great time and they, they had a blast. And so our Beta Club does a great job serving the community, organizing different events and functions at our school that benefit the community. We have a robotics and TigerBots team. So we have two different teams. Ms. McCall, she's over our Vex team, which is full of fourth and fifth graders. And then we also have our TigerBots team that is led by Ms. Fowler, Ms. Knight and Ms. Sunafelt. And that, those, that team has students from fourth to seventh grade. And they are actually competing this weekend, they qualify at the state. So they will be competing at the state level in Lexington this weekend. We will talk more about our grade level showcase events. And in the past, we've had different grade levels that would host events where families would come in, like if you've been at Star. And in the past, we've had different grade levels that would host events where families would come in, like if you've been at Star, uh, Christmas time, we've had our first grade market for several years. My oldest, who's now fourteen, has been a part of that, faithfully as well as crying. And that's just a memorable time that they will always share and they'll talk about. So we wanted to carry that over and make sure that all grade levels were giving their families that opportunity. So that's something we'll share more about in just a moment. Our Fine Art Night, that is an upcoming event that we have where we're going to be able to showcase Ms. Vickery's course, as well as some other great things that's going on in our art program. Um, and we're even thinking about ways that we can tie in maybe some fun with PE and Coach Gray. So that'll be coming up in March. And then we have our Star Squad. That is a new group of parents that are willing to volunteer in different ways. So at the beginning of the year, we had a parent that was willing to head that up. And you were able to sign up and you could choose like what would benefit or benefit your schedule. So some families are able to come in and donate their, you know, donate their time or materials. Um, others are able to, um, provide money. So for me, like I'm, I'm there a lot. I'm like, what do you need? How can I support this group with materials and things like that? And so the Star Squad has been a big help for our family nights. So for example, at STEM Night, we had also trunk or treat going on. And our Star Squad leader, Ms. Lori Hemmer, she did a great job organizing our trunk or treat event. And it was just a great turnout and being able to have that community of parent involvement and support that family night was so beneficial because we cannot make these things happen without that extra support. We have our Student Council. Again, that's another group of students that help sponsor school-wide events and different incentives. And then today, we just started our Girls on the Run. We have two teachers, Ms. Lily Swychart and Bailey, um, Bailey Parker. They are over this. And this is just a time where they are working with a group of girls that sign up from third to fifth grade. And they're talking about their health, but also their mental, their mental health and wellbeing. And so they'll do exercises and running at the beginning, but then they also have a lesson where they talk to the girls. And it's just, and at the end of it, they celebrate by running a, a, a five game. And so that started today. And that club usually has about ten girls and today they have, um, almost forty. So you just see it continue to grow. Um, another time, a great positive way to be a role model and, um, influence our, our young girls. And so then you see some things that we have coming up that's taking place. And so we're just excited to continue, um, our school engagement with our families and our community members. Okay, so Tiger Time, I think Errol, she passed out one of the forms that you have in front of you. Um, this is our related art schedule, but it's also at the bottom, you'll see where it says Tiger Time. So when we were looking at our report card, one of the areas that we knew that we wanted to focus on was student progress. So that was one of the areas where we did see, I mean, that was an area, an opportunity, opportunity for growth. And with Tiger Time, we are able to, we created a block of time. So for first through fifth grade, it's a forty-five block minutes, um, where those students are, their needs are being met, whether that's their social emotional needs or it could be academic needs. But we wanted to create a block of time that did not interrupt reading or math instruction. Because in the past, we knew that these students needed extra support, but they may have been pulled during a time that was not great. So maybe it was during their math block. And we tried to avoid that, but when you have students that have high needs, it was one of those things where we were constantly, they were missing something. And so we went, in the spring, we went to visit La France because they had a block that was similar to this and it just made so much sense. Um, and then when we were able to see our report card and see that that was an area that we needed to focus on, um, we, we knew that was something that we definitely wanted to put into our schedule. So this time is where we have, you'll see some of the pictures up here. Some of our students, they're going to an intervention block where they may need extra support with reading and math. They may be going to our school counselor, Ms. Barber, where they're needing more support with their social emotional needs. Um, they may be in Apple Art. So they, it may be a club one day a week, whether that's Apple Art, um, GT Sim, or it could be, what is it, Chorus? So that's where we fit in the chorus block, said it's students, it was available for all students because they did not have to worry about transportation or anything like that. Um, so we put, one day is our club day and the other four days we have dedicated for instruction. So this was just a great time for our students, again, to get their, um, to help meet our students' needs. And then also it protected that instructional time throughout their day. So they were not missing reading, math, or writing instruction.
And Ms. Hatcher really challenged our teachers to come up with lessons that like you can see, um, everything is hands-on and interactive and to not use Chromebooks during that time to really focus on the student's needs.
And that was definitely, it was a shift for our teachers as well because at the beginning, we were cutting back a little bit of the instruction time. So for example, with fourth and fifth grade, they switched classes four times. And so their block went from an hour and five minutes to an hour. So they, while they were losing a little bit of time, they were also gaining, um, that full hour where there was no interruptions. But we try really hard to not have any kind of additional pullouts like for, say, counseling or for, um, if a student may need to go for resource, um, if they need extra minutes for reading or math. Again, we do not do it during the instructional time. So they're not missing anything.
And for our family nights, um, these are some of the events that we have hosted this year. Um, so we have, after the hurricane days, we had a Star Shine Night and just invited Star, but any of the community members to come out. And that was just a really cool event where we were able to serve food and, um, it's free for the community. And it was just so exciting seeing like how excited the students were to see the teachers and even like Officer Randy up there. Um, so that was just such a cool night. Our kindergarten, um, they had gingerbread decorating. And we had, if you've been to Star and seen the cafeteria, um, every inch of that cafeteria and the seating was filled to capacity. So it's just very cool to see. Um, at Christmas, we hosted the Grinch Night where we actually did, um, the Grinch did volunteer his time. So the kids loved that. And, but we had different like STEM activities throughout that the kids could participate in. And so they made like reindeer food and, um, all of those things. And then the chorus performed and that was such a cool experience. You can see that in the bottom right. Because it was so interactive. They were playing drums and it was just very neat to see the different resources. But one thing that I've really seen this year is that we have outlined events that we wanted to have on our calendar. But Ms. Hatcher's been very involved with being responsive to what our families need in real time. So like before the gingerbread event for kindergarten, we added a workshop where we hosted one with academics. So just providing parents with resources that they need to help their students with working on letters and sounds at home. But then also for social emotional for kindergarten, that if they're still struggling with transition and/or, um, how to learn and do school. So we were able to offer those workshops. And then we have one coming up this month for a third through fifth grade parent. It's how to work parent portals and what is SC Ready and how to navigate social media and what can we do to support that? And so that's one thing about the family nights is trying to definitely create memories that they can count on in those traditions. But then how can we support them too by adding in additional things?
And with the Grinch Night, another thing that our Beta Club did is they were a part of, um, they were doing a service project where we collected items from the parents, the teachers. They donated different items that the nursing home needed and I was. And so that night during the Grinch Night, um, our Beta Club, they led that whole, that workshop where students were putting together the bags, the care bags for our nursing home. And so we made well enough for every, every person at the nursing home. And they also painted, um, another station we had going with, they were painting door hangers for each person at the nursing home. And so being able to deliver those and that they were from Star students, that was just a great time. Because I feel like our community does pour into us and help us in so many ways. But we also want our students to again realize that we need to give back to our community. And so that was just a great way to see our students lead that and, um, take ownership of that project.
Okay, for our grade level events, like we do try to, um, we're really honed in on where each grade level has one event that they get to do and remember. And these are things that the students and the parents look forward to. So you can see like there's daughter makes them look pretty mentee, decorating gingerbread houses. And, um, so first grade, the holiday market, that event in and of itself, it was huge. Um, that is just such a cool event, like hundreds of ornaments, Santa's cookies, pictures. Um, just such a cool event that we see and it's grown every time. The one picture that looks like the, it's very, that is where our fourth grade, they did glow writing. And so that was super cool. They wrote, um, stories and we were able to display those in the library. Um, and like our fifth grade, they do like a walk of honor and that is very cool. Um, and then we actually, they made ornaments that went to the veterans' nursing homes, just as another way to give back. But the students, if they have family members who are veterans, they get to bring in those and they display it all down the hallway. And then they get to write about it and parents come in and it's just a very, um, cool community connection. And we have our Wax Museum. That's actually coming up this week. So this picture is now, he's now in fourth grade, but third grade at the Wax Museum every year. And they dress like the characters and then they go around and they have their speeches memorized. And so you get to go around and press their button and then they recite information that they've learned about whoever they researched. So that's very exciting. Um, just the cool events that our team creates for the students and the families. So we definitely believe in the power of community and we know that the power of the team, that we can't do it all on our own. And so how do we create an environment that gives back to our students and makes it very well-rounded? Like Ms. Hatcher said, we can't do it all. So on the top left, we have the kids, Mr. Bones, they affectionately call him. But this is one of our, the kids got to dress, that they got to pick a teacher that they wanted to dress like. Well, that K-four friend, he wanted to dress like Mr. Bones. So I thought that was such a cool, such a cool moment. And so the community involvement, that's where joy comes, the Beta Club that Ms. Hatcher was talking about. One Book One School, um, the Milky Way Farm is great to come out and they bring, um, like they brought a baby calf that evening. And so the Beta Club, their picture there, and that was even, they did a clothing drive in the fall. Um, so one of the pictures in the middle, that is where we actually partnered with Ms. Walters at the high school and their employability group came and they sold hats. And so the teachers and staff came and they made hats with our second graders. So that was just a very cool partnership within the school district. And you can see our different, um, guest readers that we have, some of the mentors. We had a second grade write a book about trucks and transportation. And so we had a truck brought in and the kids got to see that. And so just a very, um, definitely believe in the power of community.
So a few more things I would like to highlight and talk about with our report card as we wrap it up is looking at over time. So you can see the academic achievement, our students that are scoring meets and exceeds. How that has improved over time from good to excellent for the past three years. So we definitely want to continue those great things. So our teachers really focusing and making sure that we are, um, teaching our standards. And so we're looking closely at that, especially with our new ELA standards. Um, also the, um, school climate there, you can see over time how that has been excellent. And again, I'll speak a little bit more about that in just a moment on one of our slides. So, and how we continue to, to grow that environment at Star. The student progress, you can see where that has been average to excellent, how it's kind of yoked back and forth over time. So again, that is where we're making sure that all students are growing and that they're continuing to, um, to continue to learn and grow. So we're looking at students that are in does not meets category. How can we get them to approaches, into meets and exceeds? So that is where we really feel that the power of our Tiger Time block, where we're able to tailor that instruction during that forty-five minutes. We're hoping that we're going to see those students, all of our students, um, really maximizing their learning, whether that's their social emotional needs or if it's their academic needs. So really that's the purpose and the plan behind our Tiger Time block that we have. Then our academic achievement, again, you can just see those, um, we scored twenty-five points out of the thirty-five here. You can see a student, um, at the bottom, excited about learning there. Um, she's one of the happiest, friendliest faces at Star. Last week I saw her at the ball field, the day she had her tonsils removed and you would have never known it. That's what she looks like. She loves school. She loves learning. And that's the expression in the face that we, we hope to see on our students. So again, this part is really highlighting our students that scored meets and exceeds. So you can see for ELA, um, seventy-four percent and then for math, seventy-eight percent. So you really have to look and see what can we tweak because there are a lot of great things going on to make sure that we're, we're continuing to grow. And then our school environment, um, nine point six out of ten. So that is, that is, um, a great number there. So how are we maintaining that? And so it starts with our leadership team. And so that's why I have a picture of, um, the two of us there because we really want to create that welcoming environment, that open door policy, not only for our students, but our teachers and our families. Um, if you have a concern or if you have a case, we want to hear it. Um, so that is really the message that we hope, that we're sending to our teachers and our families. Um, we want them to feel welcome and excited to come in our building. And then you see it goes now to our grade level team. Um, that's our fourth grade team right there. We have, that is a team that has four, our students, they have four different, um, switches throughout the day or transitions. So one is our science teacher, one's our math, reading, and then writing teacher. And they work so well together. Um, but that's, when you have a team like that, and that is what it takes so that your students are, um, so your students and your families feel welcomed and have that, that strong school welcome, that environment. And then you see one of our kindergarten teachers and her assistants. And again, just a great team. That is what you have to have throughout the building, whether it's in your cafeteria, um, whether it's your teachers and then up to your leadership, so your leadership team. So that is what we are hoping to create and continue at Star Elementary so that we keep that, that excellent school climate. And then our opportunities for growth. And I did, um, this is what I was talking about with our student progress and our Tiger Time and what we're hoping to gain from that. So on this, we scored, you see seventeen, um, out of thirty-five. And we scored average in that area. So that was definitely an area of focus for us. And so that's where Tiger Time and that block of time did come into play. And so we're excited. Um, each time we take math, we really look at our students and see how they're growing. We really focus if there's a student, um, that's kind of plateaued or not, not moving, we look and we see what's going on. Um, we'll collect more data so that we can really fill those gaps. And then again, um, other areas for growth with our student progress. So Errol did, um, she was sharing with our workshops. How can we support our families? And we've already had some of our workshops for that social emotional support with our lower grades and especially kindergarten. We were seeing students, that's a large group, and those students are coming out with very high needs. Um, some of our students, for example, we have almost a hundred students in kindergarten. Only forty of those attended K-four. So sixty of them are coming from maybe a daycare setting, but a lot of them are coming straight from home. And so they do not know how to do school. So, um, for a lot of those students, they're, they were at the beginning of the year struggling with that social emotional, um, area. And so we look, we've talked about different ways that we can support our families. And so one area is with Triple D classes. That is, um, something I did learn from my previous position. It's just, it stands for, um, Positive Parenting. And so I do feel like we could offer some support to our families that are struggling with students or their child that may not be adjusting well to school. And so how can we help our families? That would be one area. Um, continuing to offer parent workshops. And then for enrichment, for those students that are in that meets or exceeds category, how can we continue to enrich their, their learning? And so providing more project-based, hands-on learning. And that may look like more training for our teachers. And we try to be very intentional when we look at our teachers that are teaching these groups. And so some of our teachers are really great at providing that solid intervention to students that are not where they need to be. Um, other teachers are really great for those gifted and talented students. And so we want to continue, um, that enrichment block and providing our teachers and our students with more hands-on learning. And then fine-tune in Tiger Time. Again, that is something that's new for us. Again, that is something that's new for us and so looking at our instruction and the materials we're using and is it effective? And then lastly, our ML support to our multilingual learners, we have, that number has increased a good bit this year. And so we've had to, um, Ms. McClellan, she does a great job. She's our reading interventionist, but she's also done a great job having to dedicate a lot of her time to also provide more support for those students. And so again, that's just another area that we see continuing to grow and we know that we need to provide more support and how can we do that? And our last, um, opportunity for growth is with letters. And so we are wrapping up year two with letters and we are still, um, we have made a lot of, we've seen a lot of gains. We've made a lot of progress in that area as we shift from that balanced literacy to the science of, of reading. And I did provide you the second, um, document that you have or form that you have. That is something that last year when I worked with the assistant principals and the reading coaches that we created, um, because in the past we were given our math data and we were looking at math literacy. And then we were kind of guessing like where do we go from here with these students that are not where they need to be? And so we really looked at different tools and things that we piloted last year and what was effective. And you'll see the flow chart that we created for each grade. And so that was with reading coaches, assistant principals, um, getting together, that's when we're getting together every other week and really talking about what resources are we using, what assessments are we using to really fill those gaps? So continuing to use those, um, resources, I really feel that will continue to see, see growth in that area. So excited to wrap up this training, but we know that the learning is still taking place and we're still, we're still fitting all the pieces of the puzzle together. And so we're continuing to grow with letters. And so as you can see, um, I covered a lot of information. There are a lot of great things to celebrate, um, and again, looking at whatever the areas for, for growth. And so we're excited, um, we've had a great year so far and excited to see where we go from here. Do you all have any questions?
I didn't, I don't think I asked, uh, either Flat Rock's leadership team, but I'm gonna ask y'all, listen to all three presentations, it's been similar, but do y'all ever get together as a leadership team to sort of share ideas? I mean, I know y'all have principal meetings, but I'm talking about just on the elementary side to maybe bounce things off each other. Cause I mean, would y'all have an excellent, you know, it would be nice to bounce excellent down the road or?
I will say that we, especially last year, um, when, when I was, especially with the letters initiative, that was one thing that I feel like really brought together and, um, I worked closely with our assistant principals and reading coaches. And so we met and then Ms. Wilson as well, but we met every other week. And so there was so much, there were a lot of rich conversations and that's where, that flow chart did not happen overnight. That was a year-long process where we were asking for our reading coaches, not necessarily the teachers were piloting all these things, but our reading coaches, our, our assistant principals were going and we were looking at the data, looking at the resources that have been shared, um, and what we felt like would benefit our students the most. And so that is something that is district-wide there that we implemented and it was from meeting and having those conversations.
Well, that's good. I know how hard it is to try to get just a few people together, but when you're trying to get everyone together and on the same page, it's tough. My hat's off to you.
It really is that saying, like teamwork is dream work. I mean, it takes a team and so, um, yeah, I feel like that is definitely something we have at Star Elementary where everybody works together to benefit, um, students.
I think I'm speaking for all of us. We're proud of you.
Talking about letters, all the new teachers that's coming in after letters is over with, are y'all gonna train?
Yes. So, um, Ms. Heron at Flat Rock Elementary, she will be going through the train the trainer. Um, so she will be able to, where we've been using a lady from the state department, she will be able to train for our district. So we're excited about that. But she also has a cohort because we have several Flat Rock teachers that is going through volume one. And so Ms. Heron, the reading coach at Flat Rock, she has been going through that, um, unit volume one with our new teachers so that everyone is getting that training. And hopefully, a lot of colleges have caught on to this. And so our hope is that when we're getting them to already have this training, but if not, we'll have a, a plan in place. So we're all speaking the same language, that's so important. Thank y'all, great work.
Thank y'all.
Very good.
And I, I will again commend especially Ms. Hatcher because she, she took the letters initiative last year and put in a phenomenal plan as, and as you can see, um, our, our teachers have bought into it and, but it's also sustainable and that's important anytime you start an initiative like that.
Thank y'all.
Great work.
Okay, Ms. Hip, you're gonna, uh, let's lay it out there.
Yeah, very quickly, I just wanted to highlight a few things and in the appendix items, I added this morning, the, uh, complete update from SCASA. Every Friday, they send us a, a PDF, but you also got something from the School Boards Association this morning, but just a couple of things you might want to watch. Um, there's in the Senate, there's S-38, there's a bond referendum bill that wants to standardize special elections, um, making it easier for local election commissions to plan and prepare for future elections. And it just puts in some, uh, limitations on when you can do a bond referendum or a special election. And so in general, I think the School Boards Association is against that one because, uh, they send, tend to be in favor of maximum flexibility for school boards. But, um, there's, it's, to me, it has reasonable timeframes in it. Fourth Tuesday in January is the time, uh, first Tuesday after, the first Monday in April, um, the second Tuesday in June, uh, fourth Tuesday in August are the November general election dates. So it's just trying to put some parameters on it. Um, just something to watch. Another thing, and I think you all mentioned this last month maybe, Senate Bill 77 is up again, uh, mandates to live screen, live screen, live stream, school board meetings. Um, so there's, there's some verbage there that says we'd have to live stream and then if it was disturbed, then we would have two days to post it after the meeting. If this goes through, the school, the state board would have to pass a model policy and then we would have to pass a policy. So you've seen that one before, but just to take note of it. Couple others, you've probably heard a lot about the K-12 Education Lottery Scholarship Bill. If you remember this, when last year this bill passed and it had the money coming out of the general fund, then it was taken to court and the court said that was unconstitutional. Well, now they're trying to, uh, pass this bill and use the lottery scholarship money to pay for it. And so right now it went through the Senate fairly quickly. But one thing to note, there's another bill that, and I have it marked here somewhere, but basically if you've seen the bill to allow people to use debit cards to purchase lottery tickets. The reason they're pushing that bill is because that will increase lottery sales, which will put more money into the lottery scholarship pool that will help support this bill. So those things go hand in hand. Uh, an interesting part of that bill, since we've been watching, uh, how things affect the high school league, is that it specifies a student getting a scholarship that transfers from one public school to another public school may immediately participate in interscholastic sports. So that's an eligibility thing to watch. And notice there, um, in some of the conversations, the lottery scholarships in some cases will not be used just for private schools. It may could be used for say, a student from our district to transfer to Greenville County. And in some scenarios, use that money just to pay mileage or the gas bill to drive from here to Greenville County and then they would immediately be eligible. So those are some kind of unintended consequences that's in there. So I just encourage you to watch that. And then the other thing to take note of is, um, the, they call it the Educator Assistance Act, which I, I like this because it's trying to make things better for teachers. It, it's looking at a, not a lifetime certificate, that was one of the things in there, but an easier way to recertify. Now our, our educators have to collect 120 individual points to recertify. It would still do the 120 points, but it would put the mandate on the districts to say, okay, I've offered 120 points worth. So like the letters training for two years, that takes care of recertification for those teachers. And so we, it would be as simple as clicking a button when they recertify to say they've done this. So it's, they're still having to do their recertification, but it's making it much easier. Um, one thing that we've also that's been talks that we've been very cautious about is in this bill originally, it allowed a teacher to have 10 days to get out of their contract after the final pay scale was posted. Well, there was a lot of concern that, you know, the House and Senate, they don't finish until the end of June if we're lucky. And so now the provision in there is that when we give a teacher a contract, we have to give them a preliminary pay scale that, and, and that basically would be our, our present pay scale and let them know what we're thinking about with raises, but, um, it doesn't give them the provision to back out of their contract. So those are some things to watch. There's a lot more detail there, but those are the things I wanted to call your attention to at this point.
Ms. Chairman, if, if I may, I'm sorry, I mean to talk to you.
That's fine, go ahead. Ms. Chairman, if I may, I want to say one thing about that. The K-12 Education Lottery Scholarship, that S-62, I have talked with Debbie Elmore at the School Board Association and I think we're all on the same page on this. One thing that we do not like on that one is Kathy just said that they will be able to play immediately, be able to participate in interscholastic sports. But on the flip side of that, there's still a rule in place with the high school league that says if you transfer, that you have to sit out. So there's some, I don't know what the proper word is there. There's some issues with how that reads and, and, and what's going on there. Uh, we don't have any info yet on how that's gonna change, but I just want to make sure that we all know what's, one of the issues that is going on with that one.
What trumps? Does the state legislature trump any other?
They, it, it should because with most of these things, they're tying, saying they could pull back some of our funding if we don't follow them. And so, and I'll tell you, as far as the high school league goes, they are looking at changing some transfer rules, but right now what they're looking at doesn't match this completely. So, um, I think that will be something definitely to watch and, but at the end of the day, I think the high school, the, the law trumps the high school league.
Yeah, I'm sure that will, I mean, most time. Well, the other thing, a picture, I mean, picks the puzzle is even though they're pushing for the K-12 lottery, uh, and especially, um, sending some of the funds to the private schools, there's no guarantee the private schools are gonna take them. So, I mean, I don't know what they're gonna do there, but, um, I guess I sell some more lottery tickets.
Right, right. Well, and the private schools tend to take the ones they want, uh, which is another problem with legislation like this because it's not really opening it up to everybody. It's, uh, and this has been said on the Senate floor, uh, by people who oppose it, it's really giving funds to the people already paying to go there in the guise of helping underprivileged. So.
I, I still want to say this is gonna help everyone. Right, yeah.
Yep.
Agreed. That's why I'm an advocate of public education, at least we try real hard.
Right, right.
Yeah. All right. You got anything else?
Okay, yeah. No, that's the last thing on legislative. Then, um, very quickly, we included this in the packet, uh, have talked to Tripp and Hannah, the policy committee about this corporal punishment policy. And this is just a policy we need to eliminate, change, whatever word you want to use, but, but right now our present policy, JKA Corporal Punishment issued 615, it allows corporal punishment in our schools under certain circumstances. And there's, there's just no support for corporal punishment in schools anymore. We, we can't, um, we can't allow it. There are some cases where parents try to encourage it and so I just want to protect our administrators by saying that we don't allow it, period. The model policy is on the right. This came from the School Boards Association and it brings into account some, some techniques on restraint and seclusion, this awful, often used in especially special ed classrooms, but can be used in any classroom. Um, then the safety emergencies part there talks about really, if you need to, um, use physical force to protect yourself or protect somebody else, but the bottom statement on corporal punishment, and part of it got, um, eliminated from the slide, but I'll read it to you. It says, "No staff member or other person will subject a student to corporal punishment defined as any act of physical force upon a student for the purpose of punishing that student or condone the use of corporal punishment by any person under his or her supervision or control. Permission to administer corporal punishment will not be sought or accepted from any parent, legal guardian, or district official." And so, um, I would just like to, uh, ask the policy committee to take some time to look at this model policy, to look at our policy and determine what changes they would like to recommend.
Thank you for getting that, model policy. That'll be a big help, ask her to get that for us.
All right, the last thing is, um, we sent some local board approved courses through last month, but there were a few that were not on that list we found. So I wanted to go back and ask you to approve the whole list, uh, that includes everything. Um, like weightlifting wasn't on it, SAT, ACT prep wasn't on it, uh, the win prep wasn't on it. So just, um, a few things were omitted, the yearbook power hour. So, um, if we could just go back and get a motion to officially approve so that we have everything now covered on the list.
All right. Do we, uh, everyone, want to entertain a motion here?
I'm like a motion.
All right. Second. All right. I want to say. All right. You got anything else to add?
The, the only other thing I meant to add to the legislative piece is there was a, a bill put up to forgive seven days related to Hurricane Helene. But then on the Senate floor, I think Senator Massey started talking against it. So we're not real optimistic of how it's gonna go through, if it's gonna go through, but there was a something put up to try to give forgiveness for those days.
How many actual days do we have to make up? We don't have e-learning.
We have, um, three days we need to make up and then there's a fourth day I want to ask your forgiveness for. Cause there's actually four days that, um, we have to make up, but the law requires us to make up the first three, then the board can forgive three.
And we're out of e-learning, correct?
We're out of e-learning days, yes.
All right. Uh, we'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session for personnel matters. I have one to Justin, second from Hannah, all in favor? I have them. Appreciate y'all coming out. Thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, great job.
You're doing great.
Great job.
Y'all always do good.